Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today Levi and I will be discussing the Water Services financial forecast, the five-year forecast, and the results of the rate study that was just recently conducted. Today we have with us Mr. Justin Razor. He's with Raftellus and he was led the study for us, our rate study. So if there's any questions I can't answer, we'll have him answer those. And this is an information and consensus item, so we will be asking for consensus on an item. Okay. Okay, so this is a slide that was previously presented back in October to Council. And it's just a reminder, I just wanted to remind everybody what's driving the need for a rate increase. And essentially, we've experienced pretty significant inflationary impacts, and we also have some new water resources needs that we need to fund that are coming into the future. This slide, it shows that our actual O&amp;M costs from fiscal year 22 through 24 went up 34%. Our construction costs increased 38%, and our actual revenue only went up 8.5%. And if you look at the gap there, there's over 25% increase that we would need just to catch up to inflation. So keep that in mind when we get to the rate slide, I'll discuss that again. The other drivers is our capital program. And Water Services has a lot of infrastructure. Glendale has invested in our infrastructure. We have three water treatment plants, two wastewater treatment plants, a partnership plant with Shrog. We have 1,100 miles of pipe for our water distribution system, and some of that pipe dates back to the 40s and 50s, it's that old. Our sewer pipe, we have 700 miles of sewer pipe, and that even is pre-1940 that some of that was installed. It's important that we assess this infrastructure and keep it in good condition. And the reason it's important, because that's the most cost-effective way to manage these systems. The pictures are just some examples. We do have breaks that occur on water lines, and that happens not too often, but it happens pretty frequently. So that shows a water main break, and that's an example of reactive or emergency repairs that we would have to do. And the other step that comes out of like our assessments, if you look at the bottom picture, this is a clarifier at the Choya Water Treatment Plant. And our assessment showed that, you know, the bottom left picture, the coatings failed, and water was getting through the coatings and rusting the steel structure of this piece of equipment. So if we didn't address it, it would eventually rot away, and then we would pay a whole lot more money to replace that. So we went in, sandblasted it, recoded it, and we'll get another 20, 25 years out of life out of this piece of equipment. With respect to our total CIP budget, the things I just mentioned are what we typically do, and that's what's included in that first line. And it's pretty steady, in the $60 million to $70 million range. This also includes short-term drought mitigation measures, which are groundwater wells. We're in the process of constructing two new wells now, they're not completed. And we added two additional wells into our budget because we need them to make sure we're prepared for the short-term drought. The other things we're addressing, the second line is the water resources, and that's the long-term water resources. This includes raising Bartlett Dam so we have more water available in the salt system, Salt River system, and also advanced water purification. And if you add this up, it's a little over $40 million in the first five years, but the bigger costs are in the second five years when these get constructed. And these are 10-plus-year projects to get operational. And then finally, we have advanced metering infrastructure. And that is something we presented to Council, we're in the selection process, and we'll bring that back. And that's automatically reading our meters. So that we're expecting to cost about $30 million to implement, but over the life of the 15-year life of the meter, we expect that to kind of pay for itself. So that's kind of a summary of our capital program.
And with that, we'll move into our forecast assumptions for water and sewer. One of the main drivers, obviously, of water and sewer is revenue based on user charges. We've assumed that they'll be a, for our account growth, we're moving from a 1% increase in account growth to a half a percent increase in account growth. And that's driven by, you know, as the city has built out. Additionally, over the last few years, we've seen demand slightly declining in water. That's driven both on conservation and changes in buildings as people replace dryer washers and replace refrigerators and toilets. Those things are now more efficient in how they use water, and so our demand has dropped slightly. For our expense assumptions, we have assumed an average increase in our expenses for year one of about 10%, and then we've changed that to 5% for the subsequent years. As you can see from Ron's portion of the presentation related to capital, we have significant capital investments within our 10-year capital improvement plan. Within the first five years, we have improvements of about $398 million, and that is partially financed through debt issuances, and we have assumed $273 million in bond sales over the first five years. Now, this slide shows our five-year forecast with those revenue and expense assumptions as mentioned on a previous slide. Additionally, this includes the previously approved Council rate increases that were approved about three or four years ago. And as you can see, within the five years, under these current assumptions, at no point does water and sewer meet its Council fund balance policy. And shows that in its current state, this is not a sustainable system, as we're not making the appropriate investments into this system. And with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Ron.
So just to state what the objectives of the rate study is, one is to be just and reasonable, and this may seem very obvious, but this is a statute requirement in Arizona. And what it really means is that we're not over or undercharging any class of our customers. So each class of our customers should pay the right amount, not too little, not too much, that they're paying their fair share, and they're not subsidizing another customer class. It also provides revenue stability to help with our five-year forecast. And our goal is to maintain financial targets, and we have a few of them which we'll discuss, and encourage conservation. And encouraging conservation means our rates are set up for lower users, they pay a lower rate per gallon of water, and the high users pay a higher rate per gallon of water, to encourage them to use less water. Okay, there are three targets that we look at. One Levi discussed, it's the fund balance, 50% of O&amp;M expenses. The other one is the days of cash on hand that we have so that we can cover our operating expenses. And we're looking for something in the range of 180 to 250 days. And then the final one is a requirement of our debt covenants, and it's something that they require us to have a debt service coverage that's between 1.2 and 1.8. And the intent of that is to make sure that we're not overborrowing money. We limit the amount of money that we borrow so that we can be financially stable. And the purpose of these is to maintain a good credit rating and get good interest rates on the bonds or money that we borrow. So it's just to save us money in the long run. Okay, so the proposed rates, just to give a little bit of information on this slide. So first, this is a scenario for our single-family residential customer that uses 9,000 gallons a month on average. And just to put that in perspective, you could fill up a bathtub about 128 times with that much water. So it's a lot of water. And in terms of our residents, or Glendale's actual customers, 67% or 2/3 of our customers use an average of 9,000 gallons a month or less. And if you look, about half of our customers use between 6,000 and 7,000 gallons a month on average. So the average customer will see a slightly lower impact than what we're seeing up here. The two options, so option 1A includes the previously approved rate increase that goes into effect January of '26. And option 2 takes that out. And what is being proposed is that these proposed rates would be effective in October of '25, so we can keep the rate increase three months later or skip it and wait 15 months till the next rate increase. And the difference is, when you increase the rates a little bit more upfront, they're a little bit lower in the future. So you can see that as you go down, it's a little bit lower. And then when you look at the impact of the cost of these, it may look like a lot in a month, but if you put that into perspective, I mean, it's equivalent to maybe two or three gallons of gas, it's equivalent to maybe a Big Mac meal, or maybe a dozen and a half eggs. It's, inflation has been pretty impactful.
Not anymore.
All right. And then wanted to talk about how we rate, how Glendale rates with our benchmark cities from a benchmarking standpoint. And basically, Glendale is right in the middle of the pack, and this is as our rates exist today. If you add the first October rate increase, we'll still stay in the same position, we're not really moving position. And to help put this into a little bit of perspective, if you were to buy 9,000 gallons of water at a quarter vending machine, which is really cheap way to get water, that would cost $2,250. Well, for less than 10% of that cost, you're getting 9,000 gallons of water delivered to your house, you're getting sewer service, which means everything, you put down the drain, flush down the toilet, we're treating it to Class A standards and reusing it, you're getting your trash picked up every week, you're getting your recyclables picked up every week, street sweeping. So you count all those things. It's really a good deal for all the services that are provided.
Now, this next slide here reflects the recommended rate increases. We've done this on one slide. The goal of the rate increases is to have the Water and Sewer Fund meet its fund balance target by year five. So if you, as you look through this slide, you'll notice that in, you know, the first five years, well, the current year and then the next four, the fund balance is slightly below, but by the year 2930, with the proposed rate increases, independent of which option, the Water and Sewer Fund will be solvent and meet its fund balance target.
Okay, so the other thing that we looked at was implementing a stormwater management fee. And just a little bit of background on that, the stormwater management program, it is a regulatory requirement. Glendale, we have a permit that we have to adhere to. It requires all kinds of things. We have to inspect facilities, inspect catch basins on the street, inspect pipes, clean all those things. There's sampling of the water, there's quality requirements, there's analysis, there's reporting, there's a lot to it. And the intent of this program is to get stormwater that flows into the street, off of the street, and into either retention basins and drywells, or get it into Skunk Creek or the Aguafriya Channel, just to get it off of the road so they're safe. In order to accomplish this, it takes several departments. So engineering is involved, parks is involved, transportation is involved, solid waste, and water services. So between those departments, there's two different main funds that are used. We've got the general fund that is paying for maintenance of retention basins, and channels, and washes, and capital improvements that are necessary. The enterprise funds are paying to inspect and clean the stormwater pipes, catch basins, outfalls, drywells, and also the street sweeping. So that's what the program does. Many other cities have had stormwater fees for quite some time, not just in Arizona, but across the country. So we're kind of late to look at considering implementing a stormwater fee. So we looked at what other cities are charging, and Peoria's charging $1.50 a month, Tempe is at $3.00 a month, Scottsdale's at a little over $8.00 a month, and then Phoenix, they charge per meter size. So the smallest meter is $0.95, and it goes up to over $40. And each city covers different items in their fees. So that's kind of how it would rate. So the benefits of having a stormwater management fee, as we just seen in the survey that Jenny just presented, with respect to infrastructure, stormwater or storm sewer system improvement and flood drainage improvements ranked in the 80s in terms of how the respondents in Glendale felt how important that was to invest in this infrastructure. So those respondents felt it was important to invest in this infrastructure. The other benefits is, right now, we don't really have a dedicated funding source for this regulatory requirement. So implementing this fee would provide us a funding source. And the things that go along with that is, it would provide a better ability to track what we're actually spending to meet the needs of the stormwater program. So as we start gathering actual costs, then in the future, if we wanted to allocate more cost to that fee, we have the data and the information to do that. The other thing, Water Services did an integrated master plan a few years back, and the results of that recommended having a stormwater fee. And currently, there's, right now, there's a performance audit that is underway, and a couple of weeks ago, I did see the draft audit findings, and it also recommends implementing or considering implementing a stormwater fee. So for all of these reasons, our staff recommendation is, we feel that we need to implement this fee, and we think it makes a lot of sense to do that. So what is being proposed is a fee of $3.00 per account per month, and then looking at inflationary increases as we move out through the five-year planning period. That $3.00 would raise about $2.3 million per year, and what we would initially fund with it is 400K would go to parks, and they're currently, they're using a contractor to clean up Skunk Creek for stormwater reasons, and they also are cleaning retention basins after rain events. So they're spending money on it now that's coming out of the general fund. So by implementing this fee, we could reallocate 400,000 in general fund to other higher priority general fund needs. The other remaining portion would go to the sewer fund, because the sewer fund is currently funding the inspection of the storm drain, of the, all the stuff in the street, I guess, all the stuff in the, the catch basins, that's what I'm trying to say, sorry about that. So the catch basins, the stormwater pipes, and we actually go out and clean those as well. So the impact of this to the rate, we're not just taking this $3.00 and adding it on to what was proposed. If you go to the next slide, Levi, what it shows is that we're actually reducing the amount of the sewer increase that we need because the stormwater fee is offsetting some of those costs. So what we have here, on the left side of the table, is option 1A that you've seen above. It's exactly the same without the stormwater fee, and that's the option that includes the January of '26 fee being implemented. And then what we added on the right side is incorporating stormwater into that. So you can see, the first year, the sewer rate goes from 7.4% down to 2.7%. So we're reducing that and implementing the $3.00 fee. So what this shows similarly is, with the stormwater fee being implemented, we're collecting a little bit more money upfront, and in the out-years, the increase is a little bit less. And then option 2, where we just don't have the January '26 rate increase, the rate increases are a little bit higher, but it's the same thing. We're reducing the amount of sewer fee increase that we need because it's being offset by the stormwater fee. So with that, we are asking for consensus on which of these four options Council would like us to move forward to the public outreach phase of this process. And just to be clear, we're not asking you, you're not voting on a rate, you're not implementing a rate. That vote would come, we're expecting in June. So we're just asking, which of these options do you want us to move forward into the public outreach phase?
Thank you, Mayor. I think for me, the option B makes the most sense. The only concern is, is does it get us where we need to be, you know, big picture? Because I didn't add the columns up, but I don't know what the total impact is going to be between the two. I can do the math real quickly, but I guess I just, I would want to know that if option B is still going to get us where we want to be with fund balance.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Tomachoff? Yes, all four of these options meet the same five-year forecast, the second one that Levi talked about. So it meets all of those financial targets. So when you add them up, they're not going to add up to be the same, they're going to be a little bit different, but it meets that forecast.
So thank you for that, Mayor, if I could. So the stormwater, option B, including the stormwater assessment, is that what's on Slide 15? Is that included in that slide?
Mayor, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Tomachoff? Yes, it is. So again, all four of the options, this was the constant, and then we adjusted the rate so that it matched this, the five-year forecast. That's how we designed the four different rate options.
I think, for me, option B makes the most sense. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, want to clarify that, Councilmember Tomachoff, is there's option 1 and 2, and then within each option 1 and 2, there's an A and B. So for example, if you went with option 1 and option B, the total amount of savings after five years, the rates can be about 17.5% less than what it would be if you went with another option. So you can really kind of do it a couple of different ways. You can go to option 2 and do part, and do option B. So there's, that's, you need to look at it as really four different kind of independent things you can mix and match.
Mayor, if I could then, so the rate increase would be, the impact showing, let's just say, on option 2A, the 7.55 plus the amount showing on, got to find the right page here. Do we add those together to get the rate increase, or it's built into these charts that we're looking at?
It's built into the chart.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor, members of the Council? Sorry, I'm anticipating a question, but to Kevin's point about the four different options, the first decision is, do you want to do a rate increase in October and then again in January? Or do you want to do a higher rate increase in October, skip January, and come back the following January? So that's really the difference between option 1 and option 2 is...
Why don't we do that one first?
That's what I'm suggesting. Maybe we talk that one through first, and then we talk through within that, do you want to do the stormwater fee, yes or no?
With that said, actually, before we go there, you've been trying to talk.
Thank you, Mayor, and I guess...
Let's do that first, and then we'll do that.
We're all getting over to the same page pretty quickly here. I do believe that the proposal to do the stormwater fee and to aggregate the stormwater expenses into one location for tracking and auditing and all those purposes is a good idea. So that means I'm in favor of option B of either of the two. And then as far as option 1 or 2, I don't really want to hit our ratepayers with a rate increase in October of '25, and then turn around and hit them again in January of '26. So that means I'm in favor of option 2B.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Turner. We, I think we should go, I myself will support the option 2 with option B.
Mayor, I agree with that too, and I think it's similar to what we did with solid waste. We decided rather than doing, and it becomes confusing for the customers in their billing, we combined the two, the first two, because one, I think it was lowering the fuel surcharge. Anyway, we combined it all into one rate adjustment, and then, and rather than doing one and then another one right away. So I agree, option 2, and then, and then the, the...
B.
Storm drain, yes. I'm trying to find the page, but I can't, I can't find it right now.
21.
21.
Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Turner, option 2B. 2 Bravo, if you want to say that.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to get on my soapbox and say that I didn't run for City Council to raise fees on our residents, but I would, I agree with the Council in terms of option 2B for the public to weigh in on, thank you.
Mr. Melner?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with option 2B.
Okay, that was done. Next.
Mayor, I do have a question, though. So are we adopting, we're adopting a five-year rate plan? Is that, we're adopting all of these increases, I mean, well, we will be adopting a five-year rate increase? Are we, I know there's been some conversation where, and I've actually voted against a rate increase before, because I think committing to five-year, five years for rates, because the variables of our operating costs, our cost of capital, with, you know, the uncertainty about tariffs and things that may be related to our capital costs for infrastructure that we're doing, and the cost of water, I would, I prefer, would like to see we adopt a five-year rate plan, and then maybe adopt the first two years of rates, and then revisit it and see, so we don't commit to residents, these are your rates, and then we come back later and say, oh, we didn't, we didn't, they're not, it's not high enough, we're going to need more. So I don't know where we're going with this, but I'd just like to clarify that, if I could, please.
Mayor, members of the Council, I think the intent is to adopt the five years. Part of the reason for that is because in these first couple of years, we aren't meeting some of our metrics, that's very important to the bond rating agencies. So for them to be able to see, okay, you're not meeting some of your metrics on the front end, but your plan and your adopted rates will meet them by the fifth year, is important for us to maintain our bond rating the way that it is. We can always revisit them as we go, we look at them all the time. We look at revenues, we look at expenses. This was somewhat of an unprecedented period of very high inflation, no one could really have anticipated. But if something of that nature happens again, yes, we'd have to be back. But in the meantime, we'd have the five years solidified, which would help us keep our bond ratings steady and sort of secure that revenue stream in the, over that course of those five years.
Mayor, if I could, so was 2022 the last time we had a rate adjustment for water?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Tomachoff? 21, the Council voted, and it was effective in January of '22, yes.
Okay, so we're...
So we've implemented four of the five. The fifth one is the one that's January of '26, so we got through four of the five years.
Okay, thank you. And so does it make a difference with whether we say we're adopting the plan, but we're committing to the first two years, three years, these are the rates, that we actually calendar that we're going to come back and look at it again? Because there's so many variables, that's why I hesitated before with a five-year plan, because I've actually had residents say, why, you know, you said this is what the rates were going to be, and now you're changing it. So I guess it's six of one and happen doesn't have another, but committing to the rates for five years is, it's kind of unrealistic in the environment that we're in right now with the economy.
Mayor, members of the Council, I think what staff is trying to say is this, if you go back to the CIP plan that was presented earlier, we're just a little bit under a quarter billion dollars of debt to, that we'll be issuing debt on for the CIP. Bond raters, when we go to sell our debt, are going to look at what our adopted rate forecast is. Yes, you could... Yes, you could do it two years, that doesn't give them the assurance, because we're going to show them at two years, which is all we can guarantee them, that we're below our stated fund balance policies. So you may see a different rating, and when you're doing a quarter of a billion dollars, even 25 basis points, 50 basis points, can have a significant impact on the amount of interest charge that, you know, essentially, bonds don't have interest, but essentially, the, the effective interest rate of a bond can be very measurable. So our recommendation is, is to establish a five-year plan, we can continue to revisit it every other year, and, and make sure that it's still meeting the target and the goals. Doesn't mean it can't go down if we're exceeding our revenue projections, and you can also at that time make further adjustments upward if it's not meeting. But this really is for, the credit that we'll be issuing on our CIP is to maximize the best credit rating and the best interest rate by having an adopted five-year plan that gets us to our stated fund balance policy goals that are, that are in our system.
So Mayor, if I could, I agree with the five-year plan, and that's what I, that's what I, but, but to adopting the actual rates for the full five years, is there a difference as far as the bond rating?
Mayor, members of the council, yes. That the surety that those rates have been adopted is very important.
Okay, thank you.
Wilson? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we move on, off of this presentation, there's a couple of questions I had. On Slide number six, you did touch on the advanced metering program that we'll be doing, and, and we'll be investing about $30 million over the course of four years in that. It has a lifespan of 15. And you mentioned that as far as the city budget in the long run, it's about a wash, we'll be saving money as it's implemented. And I just wanted to point out that, yeah, for the city as a whole, it's a wash, but that advanced metering system has the ability to be a real benefit to a large number of individual residents that might have a water leak, and either would have a high water bill, or worse yet, they would have significant water damage if they had an interior leak while they were out of town, or something like that. So it's, it's, it's us getting into the future, but it's, in the long run, it's something that could be beneficial to just any number of our residents, and, and allow us at the same time, citywide, to save water and prevent leaks like that, too. So I just wanted to, to reinforce what, it's a good idea, even if it sounds like it's a wash, to use a water term. And then the other question or point that I, question I had, is on Slide number seven, you talked about the number of our accounts generally have been increasing by 1% a year, but we're predicting in the future they'll only be increasing by half a percent a year. And that's the gross number of our, our water accounts, right? And these rates that we're doing are based on accounts, but I know that our population growth now is in, more in multifamily than in single family. But are those multifamily units, are they a single meter for, or a few meters for the whole complex? And should we not be adjusting the rates for them on a per-unit basis, a per-housing unit basis, rather than a meter basis?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner? We are looking at apartments, and in, in terms of what rate they should be paying. Charging them individually is difficult, because, like you said, it, it's a big commercial development, and we don't have individual meters to each apartment. So, so we typically look at what the cost of service is to serve them, and then make sure the rate is appropriate, that it's just and fair to collect what they're actually, what it's actually costing us, that the rate reflects that accurately.
Okay, so I would suggest that that might be something that we could look at a little more, how we're going to do that. So like, let's take into, you know, for example, the wastewater fee, the stormwater fee, that, you know, we're going to be initiating. Well, that benefits every resident, I think, more or less equally. And so therefore, if an apartment complex has one meter but 200 family units, then perhaps that complex automatically pays 200 family units' worth of water, stormwater fee, and then they spread that out among all of their residents, you know, by recouping it in their rent cost, as opposed to undercounting the multifamily households, and having the rest of the single-family households carry a bigger burden than they should. That's my suggestion to, you know, consider, and if it hasn't been, and tossed aside already.
Mayor, members of the council, we can work with the rate study firm and take a look at that for you.
Thank you.
What else do you need?
Okay, almost done. So next, I just wanted to talk about the urban irrigation.
There we go.
Okay, so basically, urban irrigation is flood irrigation in the downtown area, and some of the lots in the highlighted yellow area that are shown on the map, not all of them, can receive flood irrigation or urban irrigation. And it's basically untreated water that comes down the canal and ditches and pipes from the Salt River Project system. The rates are set by council policy, so it's a prescriptive way that the rates are calculated. And basically, what it says is that the actual cost of that service, the city pays half of it, the rate payer pays half of it, the user of that, and, and basically, depending on the number of customers, there, the, the number of customers has been decreasing in the last several years. I would go back seven years ago, there's over 300 customers. Today, we're in the mid-270s. So the, the lower customers we get, the higher the rate goes. Last time we looked at changing the rate was back in 2019, and new rates went into effect in 2020 and '21, and they've been the same since then. And if we go to the next slide, we see what the impact is. So, so the rate has been $328.34, and that is an annual rate, one, every year, for 15 waterings for that year. And if you look down the second row from the bottom, it shows what our recovery rate has been, and it's been in the 40s. So we're not meeting the 50% recovery per council policy. So what we're proposing is to fix that rate, and rather than doing it all in one year, we want to split it up into two different years, so it gradually is increased. So if you look at the second column from the right, April of '26, the proposed rate, because that's when the watering season starts, would be $399.00 per year, and then the following year would go up, up to $485.00 a year. And next steps, after this and through April, we'll be conducting public outreach efforts. We'll be going back to our citizens' utility advisory committee. We'll be back in April to adopt a notice of intent and set a public hearing date. And then in June is when the public hearing is conducted, and a formal vote on the rate adjustments will take place, with an effective date for the new rates in October of '25, if they're approved. And that concludes our presentation.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
As you might predict, I might have something to say about the urban irrigation. It's, and it, it begins with the concept of touchpoints. Everybody in our community has a different place, has different places that they come in contact with the city and the services we provide. And, you know, obviously, some residents wouldn't, couldn't care less about urban irrigation, just like some residents don't utilize our libraries, or our parks, or our regional parks, or our special events, or any of that. So, but different residents have different touchpoints, and I know for the residents that subscribe to our urban irrigation system, it's a very important thing to them. And it's the way in which, and it has, and the reason where our recovery rate was established at 50% is because there's also a benefit to the community for urban irrigation, in that it keeps the big trees in, in the downtown alive, which, you know, has a cooling effect, it has the, you know, cleansing the air effect, it has an effect on creating the historic and traditional environment in our neighborhoods, keeping property values in this area up, lots of different reasons that there's a wider benefit than just the one yard that gets water. And I'm not necessarily proposing a solution at this point, but it's something that I think we need to be in front of and can't ignore much longer, because we're on the verge of, of probably going into a death spiral on irrigation customers, if we don't find some way to manage the cost differently, better. I'm not saying we're doing a bad job, I'm just saying we have to find some way to manage this cost, because a lot of the users of irrigation are elderly, fixed incomes, and those sorts of things. They not only get the water benefit, but they also get the benefit of having a city contractor do the turn-on and turn-offs, so they don't have to get up in the middle of the night to go out and turn on their valve for, you know, 37 minutes, or whatever the schedule might be, between 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. So it's, it's kind of a complex situation. I think it's a sensitive touchpoint for the residents that subscribe to it, and that live in the area that benefits from it. I think we need to put on our thinking caps and, and figure out, how are we going to address this, you know, in a, a more secure fashion going forward, and, you know, what options there might be. Thank you.
You have what you need?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.